Her opening electronic meeting announcement.
Okay, this meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance, number 2020 dash zero nine three. The notice of the meeting stated the following, that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be livestreamed on the school division's Facebook page, and a link was provided for the public to access. It was also noted that the board would not receive public comment, however, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rba schools.net by 1:00 p.m. today, and that those comments would be shared with the board. The agenda for the meeting was posted to the RPS Board Doc site, and a link was also provided for that. Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby, Mr. Young.
Present.
Dr. Sapini. Mrs. Door. Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here, and Dr. Sapini is here.
Okay, thank you. And you do have.
Yes, yes, yes.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair, six of the six of the nine members of your body are participating as of right now.
All right, thank you. And can I have someone to move the adoption of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Door, there is Ms. Door.
Thank you. So it was moved by Mrs. Page and seconded by, was that Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Page.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
And Mrs., uh, Miss, did you say Ms. Door?
Yes. She is.
Okay, and Ms. Owen.
Yes.
That motion passes seven oh, so your agenda is adopted as presented.
Okay, then we move to public information.
Would you have, you do have several this evening, and some of them are lengthy. Do you still want me to stop at two minutes or just try to get them all read as quickly?
I think, how many do you have?
Um, I lost them. Maybe about eight to 10, but some of them were a couple of pages in length. But I can.
Okay, well, let's, I tell you what, let's do the three minutes.
Okay.
But they'll all be posted to Board Docs.
They are already on Board Docs.
Okay.
Am I timing myself or someone else timing me?
You time yourself.
Okay. I'll get my timer going. When you say three minutes?
Yes.
Hi, Mrs. Berg.
Hi, good evening.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. Ms. Gibson has something she would like to say before we read the public information.
Okay.
I think that given that this is budget related, I'm, I think it would be good to have, to read the entire comment. So my request would be to, um, to read the, the complete, the complete comment. Thank you.
Dr. Sapini, did you need to ask your question now?
Yes, it'll basically, um, obviously, it's a totally different, a new format for us, but as it pertains to translating, was any accommodation for that? Someone asked me, so I was trying to.
I don't, I honestly don't know.
There was not any accommodations for this meeting. Mr. Stanley did reach out, and it is in the notice going forward for May 4th. They've been able to get something set up. So starting with your May 4th meeting, there is a line, a conference line that people who want translation services can call into, and it will be provided at that time. I don't know if they're going to translate this after the meeting for someone, but, um, I don't know if they could just not get the services that this short notice for today. But starting with your meeting on Monday, translation services will be provided, and it is in the notice that has gone out as to how those people can request that service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's try and accommodate Ms. Gibson and see how far we get.
I will read as quickly as I can. The first one is from Laura Coggan. She says, "Good morning. As an ESL teacher at Huguenot High School, an educational researcher, and an RPS parent, I thank you for being mindful about this budget and not letting the pandemic erase the important gains we have made in public education. How we handle these decisions will determine how we will recover as a community. I would like to address several line items in the order that they appear. First, Section One, Teacher Raises. As we attempt to resuscitate our local businesses, teacher salaries increase buying power and enhance our ability to serve as community direct service hubs. We deliver food to families in need, we coordinate services, we identify needs and respond to them before they lead to adverse events for our families. Investing in us means investing in the recovery, and it makes sense more now than ever. In Section Two, the first item is 10 additional FTEs at high priority schools. Those schools are designated high priority for a reason. That characterization loses none of its accuracy because of the pandemic. There is no reason to penalize students and families by removing the very type of mental, mentally and physically restorative activities that will lead to their successful ability to survive this new traumatic experience. Art, music, PE, and language enrichment allow students to develop the resilience in the face of losses due to the pandemic, whose effects are cruelly concentrated in the communities served by high priority schools. Moving to the third line, in Action 1.4, we should carefully consider the message that we are sending by reducing new FTEs for advanced placement and advanced course teachers. In the midst of a major rezoning campaign meant to address racial and economic segregation, it makes no sense to reduce college preparatory offerings, which are one of the first elements that parents advising high school students look for when evaluating whether to stay in RPS at the secondary level or move to private or county schools. Current parents of students in the five comprehensive RPS high schools are strong advocates for their children, but the challenges they, challenges they face are legion. They cannot always show up to protest the removal of, protest the removal of something that matters to them. And reducing these new FTEs is like pulling the rug out from under our families when they are least able to stand up and fight back. Restoring them sends a message that our family's dreams for the future matter, are attainable, and that we are willing to provide schools with the resources they need to allow our students to reach their true potential. Speaking as an RPS teacher with many hours of hall duty under my belt, the number one reason students leave class in our building is boredom. They want challenging, stimulating, advanced material that respects their intelligence. Let's give it to them through these FTEs. Moving to the fourth line in Action 1.5, we see 10 additional special education positions reduced to three. In RPS, we are under intense scrutiny because of failing to serve our exceptional education in English language learner populations. That scrutiny will not diminish due to the pandemic. Reducing these desperately needed positions will hurt, hurt real people. For example, a student I will call Q. He is bright, funny, and I just lost it, give me one moment. Bright, funny, and utterly at sea in the high school environment. He is an English language learner who seems to need a small group environment if he has any hope at all of learning. At least three teachers have written emails asking for him to be evaluated for potential exceptional education support. But we are understaffed and overburdened in our building with the students who are already served with these resources. Before the closure, Q was failing every class. If we continue not to serve him, he will drift between in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and wandering the halls. He is a slow-moving train wreck. These FTEs would throw Q a lifeline. No one will show up to speak for him. He lives with a cousin he barely knows, and he is thousands of miles from friends and family. It is up to us to care about him and dozens like him in RPS. Next, I would like to point out the fourth line in Action 1.6, materials and staff for the newcomer academy pilot. A crowd is unlikely to show up to defend a pilot project because, because it is by definition and unknown. But we do have some powerful nodes in RPS when it comes to English language learners. One is that we are not serving them, as evidenced by their school learning leaving numbers. Another is that we are attempting to serve many more ELs every year, which means that we will need expansion and innovation in advance to create successful educational programs for them. Reducing the scale of the pilot is like taking down some of the tents we will need to expand hospital capacity in advance of the next wave of the pandemic. This is exactly the wrong time to scale back on the newcomer academy. We have two incredibly dynamic ESL district leaders in Jennifer Blackwell and Janet DuHart, and we should strike while the iron is hot, not wait until we have missed another major ESL academic achievement benchmark. Again, BDOE will not grant an indefinite pardon due to the pandemic. We still need to demonstrate our improved level and scale of service to ELs, and this pilot program is an essential concrete step in that direction. In the first line of Action 3.3, I applaud you and thank you for recognizing the need for increased school social workers. But please be mindful that these new workers should be multilingual. At a minimum, they should be fluent in Spanish, and any additional languages should be rewarded as well. This is because our English learners can only be well-served by professionals who understand the cultural context of care. And even if a student's heritage language is not a language of proficiency for the social worker, the cultural intelligence that is activated when a professional studies foreign language, professional studies foreign languages will help to these new social workers to deliver culturally appropriate, effective care to our diverse RPS student population. In order to attract this caliber applicant, we may need to think about how we are compensating them. I would echo that for the final line in Action 3.3 pertaining to school counselors, the loss through promotion of our only bilingual counselor at Huguenot was devastating to our English learner and formerly English learner student population. And while it is heartening to see that one additional FTE, we must make sure to craft that position carefully. Also, having worked closely last year with our counselors as future central director, I feel that one additional FTE still does not address the burden placed on them. They are putting in a heroic effort with tremendous pressure from BDOE, the district, parents, and students all loudly demanding their attention and expecting uncompensated overtime for tasks that were not even in their job descriptions. We need to look at separating some of the administrative tasks from the counselors, placing those in a registrar, and allowing counselors to do the fulfilling academic and social emotional work they were hired to do. Next, all lines in 5.5 and 5.6 need to be restored. When buses don't pick up students, those students don't come to school. If we had a category in Aspen to denote absence excuse due to bus failure, we could track how much this contributes to absenteeism. Contributes to absenteeism. It is demoralizing for teenagers to get up at 5:00 a.m., waited at bus stop for half an hour in the cold and dark, and then walk back home because the bus never came. Then their parents receive a phone call notifying them that their child was absent, and there is no way to erase that from their attendance record, or at least none that we know. When students do make it to our exceedingly early 7:45 start time, they find a simple carb-sugar-heavy breakfast waiting for them. Many choose to go without even though they are hungry because it is not appealing, healthy, or fresh. Quality food is important for our students' minds and their sense of worth, self-worth. Next, the second line in 5.8 needs addressing. How can we come back after this pandemic without a significant increase in custodial staff? How are the requisite deep cleanings and increased frequency of cleanings going to be possible with only five new FTEs? It is very likely that new compliance guidelines will come out for public facilities to be implemented indefinitely as a result of the pandemic. We need to think ahead and meet that directive with resources. Next, the first line in Priority Two requires attention. The CISOs are the nerve centers of our schools and our district. Their accurate and efficient work is akin to the human computers and hidden figures in more ways than one. It is both unethical and unwise to skimp on their compensation. When our CISOs took personally recently, our building went into arrested development. No event short of a network failure rivals CISO absence in terms of its chilling effect on operation. That line needs to stay. In Priority Three, line 4,000 pertains to crossing guards. In front of PHSSA, there is a dangerous traffic pattern which has led to accidents and near disasters with students crossing the street. The City of Richmond has proposed plans to redesign the traffic pattern, but those are likely to be in on indefinite hold. An extremely effective crossing guard now at Westover Hills changed that experience from dangerous to pleasant. As an RPS parent, I don't believe anyone should have to worry about bodily harm just crossing the street to and from school. Let's stand up for safety. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community. Ainsley Perkins, good e, good evening, school board members. Funding for the strategic plan is being gutted due to the pandemic. When budget discussions first began the end of January, I felt the priority should be teacher raises and improving equity for all RPS students. These priorities have not changed since the pandemic. Let's remember that teacher salaries are still at pre-recession levels, and that it's just awful. During the rezoning process, we heard from some very loud voices as to why certain schools in RPS should not be changed. These voices monopolized community discussions, prevented lawful examination and discussion of our own personal biases, and resulted in minimal change. I hope these same voices are not pushing their own interests at the detriment of all students and families in RPS. The art, music, and PE classes are not luxuries, they are necessities in all of our schools. We need those 10 new positions and then some, not three. RPS is a high-needs district. It continues to struggle in providing needed services and supports to all students. We need those 10 new exceptional education positions, not three. These are basic steps that are desperately needed to start improving equity for all students in RPS. The STEM academies are a nice vision, and when we have more funding to launch a new program that is not evidence-based and does not support all students in RPS, then we can explore it further. Now, however, is not the time. Harold Aquino, when looking at the proposed cuts, I was wondering if AP Computer Science and AP Computer Science Principles could be offered at George Worth High School. Me and my classmates have wanted to take those courses, but it seems that students have no voice or the options never showed up on the course request forms we have been given in past years. It would be nice if George Worth High School were to have the same course offerings as school districts like Chesterfield, Henrico, or Fairfax. We deserve to be able to have the same educational opportunities as school districts with families who have come from a richer background. Our birthplace should not limit our future. Amy Brown, is it possible to use the stimulus funds to help purchase materials for the STEM programs, particularly the one-time purchases for Smart Labs? Ethan Parker, please ask Mr. Cameras as to why he allows reverse discrimination in his school district. Amanda Reisner, good evening. I am writing tonight concerning the potential cutting of the Behavioral Intervention Pilot for elementary schools. As someone who has been an RPS employee for 13 years, I can confirm the concerns that many board members shared last week about how the severe behaviors over the years have increased and are impacting younger students now more than ever. Each year, I have seen an increase in the need for more behavioral support at the elementary level, and it seems like every year more emphasis gets placed on behaviors in the middle and high schools. I'm not sure what you had planned for that money, but I can tell you one thing that I do know. The sooner we start helping our younger students, the more likely they are to be successful in the long run. If we continue to be reactive and wait for, wait to offer behavioral supports until they are older, then we are doing a disservice to our kids. We need to lay the foundation from day one. I have seen firsthand how successful early intervention can be. We owe it to our kids and teachers to invest in mental health and behavioral support systems in the elementary schools. Thank you for your time. Stacy Brown, members of the board. My comments tonight are regarding the proposed STEM academies that are being planned for Henderson Middle School and MLK Middle School for this coming school year. While the board and the administration seems quite excited about these new programs, as a parent, I am very concerned about the cost to implement a program that we know very little about. Teachers in both of these buildings have made comments on social media that they have not been consulted in any way and know nothing about the plans to implement the STEM Academy into their school and curriculum next year. I would think that a program of this magnitude would take a great deal of collaboration with the current sixth-grade teaching staff at these buildings. At the community information nights, we were given activities with toothpicks and marshmallows. Yet, Dr. Epps scribed at our last meeting, for the first time, I believe, anyone has heard any kind of detailed budget. Almost $2 million worth of expenditures. I am at a loss after hearing this budget budget description. Mr. Barlow asked if we could use the federal stimulus files for some of the one-time purchases for the STEM academies, and Dr. Epps responded that, quote, "This is for two grade levels on two campuses, about 300 students total. I would want the board to consider that as expenditure against other division priorities." I believe that currently the plan is just for sixth grade, so we really, so really one grade level on two campuses. However, her point remains the same. Whatever pot we take the monies from, I agree with Dr. Epps. I think we should very carefully consider this large expenditure against other division priorities. I think it would make much more sense to put the STEM academies on hold for a year. Take that year to thoroughly plan them out. Invest that time into creating a solid plan for the curriculum that makes the teachers on these two campuses feel like valued stakeholders, not bystanders being well-voted. Take that time to continue to raise awareness and excitement with our families and enroll more students that will be invested in this very costly venture. On that note, how many students exactly are we looking at for each school? And how many of those actually enrolled that would have been zoned to another school? Several board members asked for the detailed plan and budget to be released to, to members and the public. I am reiterating that request. A line item this large needs to be able to be reviewed. Thank you. Meredith Thompson, I am writing in support of teachers. I support maintaining raised increases for teachers. I support maintaining additional art, music, language, PE, advanced placement, and exceptional ed positions. Please do everything you can to keep funding in the classroom. Cut the proposed additional central office positions. Look at the proposed budget for the STEM academies and other such projects. A poorly funded, poorly funding project is worse than no additional programming as all as it will lead to a poorly executed project. Please, board members, stop just asking questions and demand answers. Where is the data to support these budgetary items such as the STEM academies? How much money is left in the bank from the current school year budget? What cuts can be made from the current existing budget? Where is the teacher representation in these budgetary discussions? I support teachers, many of you say that you do as well. Let's see it in your actions and not just in your platitudes. Catherine Roseberry, dear school board and superintendent. First of all, thank you for your hard work and dedication in trying to balance the budget each year while moving RPS in the right direction. I know it is not easy to make those choices with limited resources. This is why my request on behalf of your hard-working teachers is to try to retain a two to three, three percent raise for teachers. For years, we have been dedicated to the needs of our students by making choices with limited resources. This pandemic has shown that RPS teachers step up and step even in the most trying of times. I have been with RPS for 22 years, and I have experienced many highs and lows through different administrations. It is time for Richmond Public Schools to set the positive standard for helping to get teacher pay in Virginia back to an equitable level. Let the city and the surrounding counties look to us as leaders who take care of our people. Reward them for their sacrifices during the hard economic times and show them what it means to lead with love. Show them we are RPS strong. One of the places in the budget that we could delay funding is in the area of adopting a new curriculum for K-8, ELA, and Math. While I believe that it is important to have a strong, standards-based curriculum, our teachers and staff have adapted our current curriculum to meet the needs of our students. We are familiar with it and have received all the components for both ELA and Math. As we return to school after being out for so long, the task of implementing a brand-new curriculum is daunting in addition to meeting the diverse needs of students with varying degrees of continued online learning. We have teachers who are willing to start now, streamlining the current curriculum to meet our needs and adapt it for the upcoming year. I wish that the state funding for counselors had been passed. Now, more than ever, we need that support. Any part of the budget that can be saved for counseling, behavior interventions, trauma training, mental health services, all will be needed. Last but not least, as a former pre-K assistant and a current kindergarten teacher, I would encourage you to try to hire two to three art, music, PE teachers for our pre-K centers to share. Those resources are needed for early childhood development. Especially after the current events, our returning students will need those outlets to express their fears and calm their behaviors. Who among us has not used songs, dance, or art, or exercise during these times of stress? Our younger students will need that as well. I know that some of these are big asks. Just as teachers have high expectations of their students, we are asking a lot of you. I appreciate your time, your dedication, and your willingness to listen to your people. Thank you. Katina Harris, and she is sending this on behalf of the REA president. Good evening, Chairwoman Owens, school board members, and Superintendent Cameras. We all know from our personal experiences how bad the funding situation is. We have known about this problem for years. We know our state funding is still down 16% compared to a decade ago. That's why the dedicated employees of Richmond Public Schools have led the fight for the past several years at the General Assembly, pushing our lawmakers to invest in our schools. We continue to fight for our profession, for our students, and for our collective future. As you consider the FY '21 budget, we urge you to include increased wages for our employees and protect aspects of the budget that will immediately be felt in the classrooms. We recognize that the originally proposed 4% teacher raise has a hefty price tag, but it is still less than half of the $19 million in new funding you get to allocate. Investing in your employees would prove that you are putting students and educators first. This pandemic has shown us that educators are truly invaluable to our community, and it is past time for our paychecks to reflect that. In Virginia, educators have shoulder the brunt of the previous economic downturn. Over the past several years, the average weekly wages of public school teachers, adjusted for inflation, have decreased while the weekly wages of other college graduates have risen. In fact, educators in Virginia have the third worst wage penalty in the United States, and we are dead last for wage competitiveness. During the last economic downturn, our salaries were the, the first thing cut from the budget, and they never recovered. It is irresponsible and unconscionable to ask educators to once again be the first ones to take the hit. While the full 4% salary raise may not be realistic, we strongly urge you to find a way to fund a 2% to 3% raise for RPS educators. We understand that making cuts is a difficult task and that hard decisions will have to be made. However, we urge you to prioritize our frontline workers over moving forward with new curriculum, new programs, and additional, additional central office downtown staff. We fully support funding the additional proposed FTEs that would work in the brick-and-mortar school buildings, but we ask you to reconsider the addition of any proposed positions that would be housed downtown. For example, we suggest eliminating the proposed recruiter position and the school planning team position, which would cost the district $384,000. We would like to see those dollars reallocated to fund four art, music teachers for the pre-K centers, which was previously cut from the budget. We also question whether or not now is the right time to launch a new K-8 math and reading curriculum. Just this year, classroom teachers finally received support materials for our current curriculum, such as the trade books for the language arts series and math manipulatives to support the math program. We understand that the new intent of adopting the new curricula now was to allow educators an opportunity to be trained on the new materials prior to the start of the new school year. However, considering the current circumstances, we respectfully ask that you pause this initiative and reallocate those dollars to fund other priorities within the budget, such as covering the cost of the Elementary Behavior Intervention Pilot and the Equity Fund. According to proposed line items, the curriculum adoption will cost nearly 1.5 million. This money would fully cover the cost of implementing the Elementary Behavior and Intervention Pilot and the Equity Fund. As you can see from these requests, we have examined the budget as closely as possible. You can also see that we have strong opinions about where the district's dollars are best used to serve our students. These recommendations stem from insight that can only be gained from working directly with students in the classroom. In order to take full advantage of the knowledge of our educators, we have to final ask additional details about the budget and REA participation in budget meetings. We want to thank Mrs. Gibson for requesting that our, our REA have a seat at the table during these meetings. This practice is something that was done under previous administrations, and we would support bringing this practice back again. We also support Mrs. Gibson's request asking for additional budget details. Our main priority is protecting the classroom as much as possible. In order to do that work, we need to be able to scrutinize every line item in every department and/or as much as feasibly possible. Thank you. Victoria Pearson. Good evening, my name is Victoria Pearson, and I am an ESL teacher at Elkhart Thompson Middle School, soon to be River City Middle School. Our new school will be home to a large population of English, English learners. Our new school will be home to a large population of English learners, which is why the Division ESL Department has proposed a newcomer center housed within the school, the new school. The other will be housed at George With. These programs will provide specialized language instruction for newly arrived English learners, as recommended by the US DOE Office of English Language Acquisition. The recent decrease in funding has asked us to make tough decisions regarding cuts to the proposed budget for next year. However, I strongly advocate to maintain the funding for the newcomer centers so that we can provide the required service hours of language instruction. It skipped on me. Give me one second. So that we can provide the required service hours of language instruction for these incoming students. Approximately one-third of all English learners in RPS are considered newcomers, meaning they are within their first year of enrolling in a US public school. If the budget for the newcomer centers is reduced, we will have to limit the number of newly arrived English learners who will receive these specialized services. As the dropout rate for English learners in RPS is currently at almost 50%, we cannot afford to reduce the already limited services we provide to these students. I strongly advise the board to consider ways to ensure that all funding for ELL-related programs is maintained. Thank you. Caitlin Mendez, hello. I am writing to address the topic of funding with regard to the ESL, now LIEP department. This is my fifth year teaching and my third year with Richmond Public Schools. I am the ESL department chair at Huguenot High School, and I am concerned about the possible cuts to the budget within our department. When referring to ESL, it is important to note that the influx of students that continuously occurs every school year. The number of English learner students is constantly increasing. Studies have shown that the recommended class size for ESL is between 15 to 20 students. That being said, we need to increase the number of ESL staff that we currently have at our high schools in order to create smaller class sizes that promote a more beneficial classroom environment where students can have greater opportunities for academic success. Furthermore, the ESL department plans to create and implement a newcomer center this coming year. The center would assist students in acclimating to their new surroundings. It would allow the students to acquire both social and academic language in an environment that specifically targets their needs. In addition, the VDOE plans to audit our department this coming year. We need to create positions such as a compliance coordinator to ensure that our schools are in accordance with the state regulations for English learners. In the past, we have struggled to comply with these regulations. This position is necessary in order to guarantee our students are receiving their required accommodations. How can we expect students to acquire the knowledge and skills we are teaching them in the classroom if they are not being provided within the proper tools to be successful? Our budget for this upcoming year needs to reflect our growing ESL population, provide an environment that is beneficial to our newcomers' language acquisition, as well as allow for the new positions that need to be added to ensure our English learner students receive their proper accommodations. Thank you for your time and consideration. Andrea Emerson. My name is Andrea Emerson, and I am here to plead that the LIEP-related action line items in the budget not be put on the back burner or diminished at all. Last year, our IEP ESL program had just started to get off the ground and was gaining momentum with all of the new programs and ideas that were to come in the 2020-2021 school year. I understand that these are stressful times financially and that you have a lot of tough decisions to make. However, our ELL numbers have grown faster than what anyone could have guessed. The ESL students of RPS deserve equal access to every resource, teacher, printed, counseling, as our non-ELL population. Taking any funds away will diminish our ability to make this happen. The new programs and ESL staff positions that we are preparing for in the coming school year will further strengthen our growing program and better allow us to meet the growing demands of our ELL community. Thank you for your time and consideration. And that was your last comment. You're on mute. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now, tonight, we are discussing the budget cuts. We are not taking any votes. Okay? So, I don't know, I have, you know, my little chat over here, so we have the presentation. Very detailed from the administration about ways to cut this money that we need to cut. And so if you would like to speak, then just let me know on the chat, and we will go forth from there. No? We wanted to have some more time to talk, so here we are. Does anybody have particular concerns or suggestions for changes from what the administration has recommended? And Ms. Wilson, you know Ms. Burke is with us also.
Yes, I did see her and I spoke. I have her down. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Young, and then Dr. Sapini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear all of our stakeholders, particularly our teachers, weigh in as relates to what we need to do between now and when we send, send to, to council or when we adopt, when we adopt something very, very soon. I'd like to encourage us to begin with what arguably constituted the majority of the commentary this evening, specifically the pay, pay raise for, for teachers. And if, if it's the will of the group, I would propose, and I understand we're not taking any votes this evening, but I propose that we try to develop some kind of consensus around what that pay raise should, should look like. I'm prepared to advocate for a 3%, raise. Conveyed that in our last couple of conversations. Perhaps some other, some other folks, sorry, some other folks have some, some different perspectives on that. But, but Madam Chair, it seems to me that, that, that is one, if, if not the top priority for us to arrive at some kind of consensus for, and, and probably would provide a lot of, a lot of clarity to the administration. If we could develop some kind of consensus around what that raise should look like. Again, I propose three, but some other folks may have differing opinions. And then if we are able to arrive at some kind of, some kind of consensus, even absent a vote, then obviously, the next step would be incumbent on us to then identify the, the dollars if that's something more than what's proposed herein. So that'd be my proposal for how we proceed this, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Dr. Sapini, and then Mr. Barlow, Ms. Page, Ms. Gibson.
Yeah. My question pertains to ELL. And it's how much money was allocated to support the ELL students for this upcoming year within each item, line item? And how much would change with any cuts? That may not be a quick answer, but do you have that, my chairs?
Do, do you want me to answer that?
Mr. Camus, you can come into that before we go to Mr. Barlow.
Sure. So, we had put in the budget enough funds to match the state allocations to be able to hire 10 additional ESL teachers. We have not touched that, so that remains at the 300,000 mark. That's the primary investment in our English language learners. The other item is the newcomer academy, which we did scale back somewhat to account for the, the lower revenue. The goal is still to pilot it, but not at as large a scale as we had originally intended.
Do you know how much will be lost from that budget?
We had, I'm looking for it. We originally were going to have a total budget of half a million for that, and we have scaled it to 200,000.
Okay. Then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Page, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Dorr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've got a, a few quick questions for the, for the administration. And some of these are things that we heard through public comment as well. But I'd also like to see what we can do to increase the teacher raise this year. And in particular, I'm curious to know about a few of the line items that have, that are still included in the budget to get an idea of where we are in implementation and whether COVID may impact implementation anyway. And then whether there's an opportunity to, to phase in our approach with, both with, with respect to the specialty schools and the curriculum implementation. So I'd like to hear the administration's feedback on that. And then I'm also curious to know about the, to get some more input on why the HR system projected costs increased.
Ms. Wilson, would you like me to respond?
Sure.
Okay. So, the first question was about the new curricula and the specialty programs. I'm assuming you're referencing the, the STEM academies. On the curricula, in some ways, I think now more than ever, it is going to be critical that we have the very best curricular resources for our students. And so, while I know this is obviously a very uncertain time, I do think continuing to move forward with that work is going to be critical to the, to the work of frankly responding to the virus. When we have really high-quality curricula in the hands of our teachers along with the necessary training, and a lot of the money in there is for training, that's when our kids, particularly our most vulnerable kids, have the best chance for success. So that is something I think is, is very important that we continue to move forward. On the STEM academies, likewise, this is a key part of our strategic plan. And I think as we respond to the coronavirus, we also need to not give up on our dreams for RPS. And our strategic plan was named that intentionally because these really are the dreams and aspirations we have for RPS students. I also want to point out, again, these programs are specifically targeted with equity in mind. They are focused on our two middle schools that are, by test scores, and I know that's only one measure, are the lowest performing in Richmond. And so all of the resources in those academies are, in essence, a massive equity play. They are about adding staff and resources to help the children in RPS who are furthest away from opportunity. And so, again, I think moving forward with these is critical. We also have dozens of families who have chosen this path for their young people, and to change that at this point, I think would be exceedingly disruptive. And then you had asked, I'm sorry, please remind me the, the last item?
Yep. So the last item was with respect to the increased costs for the HR system.
Oh. Just some of the initial conversations that occurred as part of the normal procurement process indicated that it's likely to be more expensive than we originally anticipated. And so we just wanted to make sure, given this is a purchase for the next 15-plus years, we have talked ad nauseam about how troubled our current system is. This is one of those things we don't want to shortchange. We want to make sure we get the right system that meets our needs. And so, we just adjusted that up accordingly.
And I know that we have other questions, but with respect to, to that item in particular, have those discussions occurred pre, pre-quarantine? I imagine, I, I work for an organization that sells software to large institutions, and there's a lot of pressure to government institutions, and there's a lot of pressure all around to preserve potential deals. So I am curious to know whether we may have, I don't want to say leverage, but given the circumstances, whether we may be able to, to, to get a, an HR system at a better cost.
Yes, those adjustments were based largely on conversations that happened pre-COVID-19. So there may be some additional room for negotiation on that, particularly given where we are. We just wanted to err on the side of caution, given the importance of this, to make sure that we had a sufficient budget amount.
Thank you, Mr. Camus, and now Ms. Page, and I understand Ms. Page is planning to leave us early because it is her birthday, and she has a celebration to attend at home. So, we will hear now from Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several questions, so I'm not going to ask them all at once, but, um, so my first, hold on, so my first question regarding the STEM academies. So, as far as, so the FTE amount, that includes the salary and the benefits. Superintendent Camus, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so my next question is, the Chromebooks, Smart Lab, Science Lab equipment, can the stimulus funds or Carl Perkins funds be used for any of that?
We could use the stimulus funds for those, you know, if that was the will of the board. You know, I think there are lots of demands on the stimulus funds. I, I do want to refresh everyone's memory that, you know, to add a month of school is, is probably around 20 million or so, if we were talking about going to year-round school. We're continuing to crunch those numbers, so I do want us to be judicious about the stimulus funds. But they are one-time funds, and so things like technology are certainly well within the purview of the stimulus. So, yes, that is a possibility.
So what about the Carl Perkins?
I would defer to Dr. Epp on that question.
Well, we, I believe that those would be allowable, however, because they are Title I schools. But we have already adopted and set our Carl Perkins grant application. I'm not sure of the process for pulling that back and making revisions, but I'm happy to find out.
Please. I mean, because if so, that would be a substantial amount in the budget where we could reallocate some of our priorities.
Sure, I would definitely look into it.
Okay, and, okay, so then my next question regarding the equity offerings. You know, regarding the science equipment, art supplies, athletic equipment, musical instrument. All, all of that promotes experiences. It levels the playing field. Is that opportunity, and I know there's a demand on the stimulus funding, but things like that, you know, we, we keep talking about equity, and we talking about creating, creating opportunities for our students. And we can't really support equity offerings, you know, if we're just talking about it and not being about it. So you know, I feel strongly not to eliminate that from the budget because those are opportunities and experiences, as I have stated, for our students. And you know, a lot, a lot of our schools, and I think that will be a disservice if we eliminated that. So, you know, some other opportunities of the savings or reallocation of funding, I think is worth looking into. Because just like I said with the STEM, if we can use some of the Carl Perkins funding for that, again, those are dollars that we can support things in equity offerings as a possibility.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Page. Now are you sure you don't want to say anything else? Because I know you wanted to leave.
No, I'm, I'm gonna stay, because this is, I'm, I'm going to stay because I have several questions
Okay.
that I would like to.
All right, then we'll go to Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Door.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I wanted to say that I wholly support looking and seeing what we can do to increase teacher salaries and staff salaries. And I also want us to consider putting on the table, you know, if, if we're not able to do the raise this year, but also as a concession to, to look at that step increase and putting that closer to inflation. Because I think that, you know, giving our, our staff the, the understanding that we are looking to do year over year step growth, I think definitely sends a strong message. I support the changes that were requested by the Richmond Education Association. And I hope that my colleagues are, agree with some of those suggestions, including revisiting the timing for the curriculum changes. And, you know, I think that when we started this meeting, that, you know, it was, there was a slow start in terms of, you know, people joining in and wanting to speak. And I, I think that the reason for that ultimately is, you know, we don't have a lot of new information right now to be able to engage in this discussion. I sent an email to administration recapping those items that, that I think are important for the board to have. I mean, ultimately, you know, we are not able to make decisions about spending until we know how much money is in the bank and we know, you know, that we're actually going to be able to, to go to the store and purchase those things in time. So, so I think those are, those are really critical to have. And without that information, I question our ability to really be able to make informed decisions. I'm going to read through the items just for, to recap. I think it's critical that we get actual budget numbers for the current school year. This is something that I requested initially on March 24th. I think we need to get, again, the more detailed information in terms of the federal stimulus funds and, and how we're planning to use those dollars. I think we need really a specific budget that is going to address the needs of, specific to the impact of COVID-19, including reducing class sizes, additional nurses and counselors, additional custodians, as was been discussed, professional development, more IT support in the potential reality that there might be more online learning. And we certainly need more IT to support the additional laptops that we're looking to purchase. I think it's important that we really look at very specific scenario plans for the 2020, 21 school year. That's going to include the possibility of extending summers or not having summer school this year, extending the year next year, delayed start, any other possible delays with the new school construction projects, any possible changes to the projected revenue. And I, and I think that we also, you know, specific to summer school, we really need to identify what is the line in the sand in terms of making a decision on that. And if we're considering a virtual summer school, I think we need to list all of the positions. We need to see, you know, what are all the vacant positions right now so that we can make some, some decisions about how we move forward on those positions that have not yet been filled. I think we really need to take a critical eye at all of the existing contracts that we have to determine, you know, what are the things that we want to make sure are going forward next year and not. I think that we need a very detailed schedule in terms of what are our next steps in this overall budget development process, including the, you know, working and speaking to council. I think that we need, you know, a proposed timeline for all of the budget items that are, that are in the plan. The new, you know, whether it's the newcomer welcome centers, whether it's curriculum, really everything, every single thing that we're purchasing and that we're proposing to purchase, we need a plan behind it. It's not, at this stage especially, it's not enough just to identify the funds. We need to know specifics. So what is the timing for those hires? What is the timing for the purchases? What is the timing for any work completion that would be included in those things? If we have the plan and we know that we can do it, I, I would feel a lot more comfortable being able to support those things with that type of detail. I appreciate that we've gotten the additional information in terms of the STEM academies. I would like to see, there was discussion about using grant funds for the STEM academies. That was one of the reasons why the administration chose to specifically make those specialty programs STEM programs. So I, I do want to appreciate where the, the grant funding is, is coming from and how it'll be used. And if there are any other private funds that are planned to be used for the STEM academies. And I, I think too, you know, we, we need to see very, we need to see the specifics. How, how are those things going to be able to be implemented in time for the new school year? And I encourage the, the administration to look at the creation of the program at Benford. That was a program that I think we all see as a very successful program. And it grew over time and, and expanded its scope over time. And I, and I think that might be, you know, there might be some good opportunities in terms of looking at learnings and what we've done before. I think we really need to have a very solid understanding in terms of transportation, including the VPI schedule change that was discussed, whatever the plans are for contracted services next year, any budget implications that we have and we now need to consider because of decisions made during rezoning, the cost for those grandfathered students, the STEM academies, what is the transportation plan in terms of students that are coming in through open enrollment? And then the specific budget for the Mary Mumford Carver M2M program that was adopted last year or before the, during the rezoning process. I think we need specifics in terms of, of our current staff and, and what we're doing to address our student, our current staff needs. I was encouraged to see the email that went out regarding the transfer fair. And then finally, I think as it pertains to the school construction projects, you know, what is the possible implication as we're seeing certainly a cut in terms of the meals tax? So, so, so what is, what is that going to look like in terms of making good on, on the, the cost of these, these buildings, which are now in production? And, and likewise with those projects, we, we still had not yet gotten final budget numbers. There were several line items that were TBD. And I think it's critical that we, we get those numbers now so that we can, again, make some decisions and look how we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Door, you have a question?
I did, but I actually found it in the budget. But I did, a new question came to light, but I do think it might, and maybe the administration can confirm this for the good of the group. But my under, one of the things that I think we've all been paying attention to slash concerned about is, as many of my colleagues have said before, what is our response to the students that have been out of school for six plus months? And how are we going to make sure that we wrap our arms around them, not just from an educational perspective, but from a community perspective? I'm really glad to see the fall, that we've added $1 million in additional social worker funds. I believe that is in response to COVID-19, but I don't know if it's explicitly called out. So I think it'd be good to get your perspective there. And the other two things that I noticed, I believe are semi-related to the response around coronavirus are maintaining the local match for 15 additional reading specialists and the K3 teachers and instructional assistants at $2 million. So if I, if you could, I wasn't sure, but I think all three of those items are currently not being matched by the state, but maybe they are, but we're, we're choosing to maintain them in order to, to make sure that we have ample resources to support our students. So I would be interested in, it's a little bit buried, so just sort of the administration's perspective there. And then I also wanted to follow up on Mr. Barlow's line of questioning around the HR system. I do recall that we discussed this budget cost item before Corona hit. However, one thing that be interested in to understand, is this a one-time item? And if yes, are there, are there fund balance dollars that could be moved over that we could use to pay for this? Or is there a way to amortize this cost over several years as opposed to paying upfront? That's a big chunk of money, nearly a little north of $800,000 that we could potentially reallocate. And then in terms of advancing the discussion forward on kind of where I stand, I would like to see us get to at least a 2% teacher raise. And I do support the REA's recommendation regarding reallocating the recruiter and school planning team positions at 384,000 to fund the art and music teachers and pre-K centers that were previously cut from the budget. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, Mr. Cameras, did you want to?
Just on Ms. Door's first point, I did want to confirm the gist of what she was saying. We have not been maximizing the state matching funds for reading specialists or K through three class size reduction. So you're absolutely right, is specifically our intent to do so and to maintain those funds. And you'll see none of those funds, even though they're rather large line items, have been reduced precisely because of the coronavirus. We think those positions, all those reading specialists, reducing the class sizes will be critical, plus the new social workers. So yes, that's exactly right. And I appreciate the feedback to make that clearer for the board and the public. So we'll certainly do some thinking about how to do that beyond tonight.
Okay, Mr. Young and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, just a very brief point that will merit, require a lot of, a lot of conversation. But the superintendent spoke to something that, that I suspect there's a lot of support for, perhaps unlike never before. And specifically that pertains to year round school. I think to, to plan for anything less than a year round calendar would be less than prudent just because we don't, at the risk of stating the obvious, we just don't know what's, what's going to materialize in, in the fall or the winter. But it seems to me that for what it's worth, all the scientists are projecting that even if we, we beat this virus for the moment, that it likely will come back. And again, at the risk of stating the obvious, we just need to build in as much flexibility into the schedule as, as possible. And so to his point, to the superintendent's point, that's probably going to require, that's probably going to require more money than what has been allocated to us to date in, in COVID-19 funds or emergency relief funds. Again, I recognize it's all unknown, we're rather flying, flying blind on this. But, but I do think, I do think that we should incorporate in this budget some kind of contingency monies that would allow for us to initiate a year round school year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask the remaining questions that I have. So first I want to ask you some where the superintendent asks questions about like the manager and college career pathways is in here is maintained. So if it's needed, if so, why? And then what are the implications? Because we're looking at $156,000. And the next one related to that, like the preschool leads to principals, is that needed right now? You know, what is the value? Is it something, you know, can we press pause? If so, those are additional dollars that can be reallocated. And then the RTR coaches, that's half a million dollars. So, you know, just wanted, you know, if it's needed, the value and, you know, what are the implications? Because we had to, we got to make some tough decisions. And again, I want to make sure that the necessary support for our students and our teachers, you know, is there? So I, I just don't want to, right now, like I said, we just got to make tough decisions, you know, regarding COVID. And so superintendent, if you could speak to those items and then I have a follow-up after that.
All right, Mr. Cameras?
Sure, let me go in reverse order. So the, the half a million for RTR is to maintain the current program. It's not any increase. It largely pays for the coaches that support the Richmond teacher residents. So that's how they get their training and support. If it were the will of the board, I could go back to RTR and say, we're scaling back the program next year. We just can't afford the full breadth of the program. They might say, you know, okay, you'll have just fewer residents next year. I, I don't know, but that is certainly an option on the table. On the preschool leads, upgrading those to principals, I will note, we are quite literally days away from making offers to a number of individuals, a number of whom are internal candidates who applied predicated on those new salaries. So I, I do think that would have a negative effect on our preschool centers, but certainly understand you raising that, that cost. And then on the director of college and career pathways, that is a position that's currently filled. This is just a, a budget adjustment to reflect the true cost of salary and benefits. As to the specifics of the work, I can certainly give you a high level, but Dr. Up can speak in more detail about the function of that role and, and its impact.
Okay, so my follow-up question. At our last budget work session, there was a lot of support regarding the behavioral intervention pilot program. And so I'm seeing it still in this, where an updated budget is, um, been eliminated. And I thought the board made it very clear that work is, is very important and is needed in our schools. So for that, you know, to be eliminated, you know, what's, what's going on with that?
Yes, I didn't make any substantive changes to the budget document between our last meeting and this one. I certainly have notes on priorities for the board. And I would say probably top of that list is the behavior intervention pilot. And I was holding off to make those adjustments until I had a little bit more clarity on where the board was on some of the larger ticket items. This evening, I have heard board members indicate a desire to have a 2% raise, a 3% raise, even a 4% raise. Obviously, given the magnitude of, of the dollars associated with those raises, getting an understanding from the board where they are on, on matters like that will help me then go back and understand, okay, to increase the behavior pilot and to increase the raise, I need to come up with, you know, $2 to $3 million in cuts elsewhere, and then I'll go back and, and do that. So please, please do not interpret that number staying. So please, please do not interpret that number staying as it was, as a, as the administration not responding to the board. Merely, I didn't want to have lots of different dueling documents that were confusing. So I, I certainly heard the feedback at our last meeting that that was a key priority for the board, and we will follow up accordingly.
Okay. And again, I think it's imperative that we, we receive information regarding the Carl Perkins funds. Because if those funds for the STEM Academy, you know, the Carl Perkins funds can be used for that, that's a substantial amount that could be reallocated. Reallocation of fundings to support other priorities in the budget.
Yes, and Dr.
I, I just want to make stress that, um, the importance of getting that information is critical.
I will absolutely. I'm sending an email this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Page. Enjoy your birthday.
All right. Thank you.
And now Ms. Cosby. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to give some of my, based on this updated budget. So I'm in full support. I support my colleagues who've mentioned some type of raise. I'm in full support of at minimum a 2% raise. I am, I did have a question regarding the RTR that Ms. Page brought up. I, I don't know, how many, how many residents do we have on average with this program?
Dr. Epp, do you have that number offhand or would we have to gather?
I, I can give a rough number, but I don't want to misquote. I think typically we have about 30 in any given year, and it's a two-year cycle. So in an ideal world, if we fill all of our spots, I believe it's about 30 and 30. But I can get the exact numbers from, I can get the exact numbers.
Okay. Thank you for that. I am in full support of maintaining what is here for the STEM academies. If we can find another way to fund it through Carl Perkins, that's great. But I'm in full support of keeping the funds for the STEM academies, as well as I am in full support, is not in here, but would like to see the monies. Would like for us to look at the monies for the equity funds. I think that's critical.
Okay.
And.
And?
Those were the ones that I wanted to highlight.
Okay.
But I will ask this of the administration. We, you know, I did send an email asking for a list of vacant positions. Would like to get a list of vacant positions by our next meeting, Madam Chair. So that if we want to reallocate funds for something else, that's another priority, we can look and see where we are with those vacant positions.
Okay.
Yes, I had indicated earlier today via email that we will have the vacancy list for our next board meeting.
Okay. Okay. I would just, I would say that of all the things to press pause on, for me, it would be the new curriculum rollout. And, and really, it's for both the students and the teachers. Again, we will probably not have, be able to get all of that to them at the beginning of June, which is what we had said we wanted to do. That was the problem before, is that they didn't have time to immerse themselves in it, to become familiar with it. I've been there. I've done that. And it's really hard to do a new curriculum without plenty of time and planning. We used to meet during the summer and with the colleagues on the grade level and discuss what this new curriculum was going to look like, how we were going to implement it, what we were going to do. And so for me, as, as much as I know, this is going to be an improvement. The teachers are familiar with the curriculum that they had to, had to learn on the fly this year. And they got the materials to go with it on the fly this year. So for me, that's one that I would suggest putting the pause on. I, I'm, I'm just not sure if we can come up with enough cuts to give a 2% raise. So I'm still standing with the step where it is and the 1% raise. But maybe there, maybe there are places that, I, I looked through this with a fine-tooth comb, trying to put back that, as I had told Mr. Cameras, that early intervention for little people who need it so badly. And I could not come up with enough money to do that, even putting pause on the new curriculum. So I look forward to hearing from you all, where we're going to find the money, what we're going to cut. Because it's hard. It is, I mean, I found a $10,000 one, but you know what? That doesn't really, that doesn't really do anything. So I think that we want to do everything we want to do. We, that's why we had that big budget, because we wanted to do all of that. Because we are seeing growth and change, and we're moving in this upward direction. But the reality is, we cannot do it all. So I don't see anybody else on the chat. We will be back together on Monday. And we will still not adopt a budget on Monday. I believe I'm correct, I mean, approve a budget. Always get that confused. Approve a budget on Monday.
Adopt.
Adopt.
Adopt, Madam Chair.
We're not going to do it on Monday, right? We're going to, we're going to have, we're going to figure out some way to get, you know, closer to it on Monday, along with a lot of other things we've got going on, on Monday. But I want, I want everybody who's watching us on Facebook to know that every single person here cares deeply about the children. I know, even if they're 18 years old, they're children to me, about the children and about the teachers and all the staff. The nutrition workers who are just working so hard out there, thank you so much. The custodians, the bus drivers going out there to the neighborhoods. We care deeply about all of you. We thank all of you. And we wish we could do every single thing you want us to do. And we're trying our very best to make the best out of this situation. So please, all of you, stay safe. Oh, I see now I've got some people who want to comment. So I will get first Ms. Burke and then Mr. Young, and then hopefully we'll be wrapping this up. So Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh my, why am I hearing an echo? All right, I listened at length and I too, also my position so far is what's listed. I do support a raise for our teachers as well as a step. But something else we haven't talked about, and if it's here, please point it out for me. We're going to increase the amount of, of salary for our bus drivers, our custodians, and the teachers. Well, teachers would be different. But we haven't said anything about teacher assistance. Is that correct? Teacher assistance, can you all hear me? Lynda, you're mute.
I am unmuted now. And Mr. Cameras, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the raise is for all, all employees. Not central office, but all the school-based employees. Is that correct?
Not the staff.
It's for all employees, except, except myself and the leadership team.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, just as we're doing the bus drivers and the, who else? Custodians, we're going to put them on a different scale, correct?
Correct.
Right. What I am suggesting, and I, I agree with what our colleagues, my colleagues stated earlier. Once we look at the vacant, vacant positions that are there, as well as contracts, because we're still out of school. So there should be some money there left someplace. I am proposing at this point of increasing, putting our teacher assistants on a different scale, a higher scale. They work hard. We're getting ready to hire more teacher assistants to help the teachers. But I think it's only fair to also include, put them on, to have an opportunity beyond just the raise, be it 2%, 3%, 4%, whatever in step. But they, because they, they are not on steps. They would be on steps though, correct? Yes. But what I'm proposing at this point is please to bring back, up, another proposal and to consider our instructional assistants being on a, a better pay scale. And my other question, comment, I do support the suggestion regarding the STEM Academy. Excuse me, STEM Academy. I believe that we probably could use Carl Perkins money or stimulus money. But it's so important. I was so excited to see what was listed. Every middle school should have all the materials that they need, every elementary school. I'm disappointed to see in the first section 1.1, the science equipment is, is, is obsolete, if any at all. We, our students need the science equipment. They need the art equipment. So I'm asking three things. Number one, a better pay scale for our teacher assistants. Number two, Action 1.1 funds for science and art. And the third item, the behavior specialist and the intervention, early intervention program to be considered. But we don't know how much longer we're going to be out of, out of school. We may not be back in September. Hopefully we will. But I think there's, there has to be money someplace that we have in touch because we're not in school every day. So there has to be some type of program that we're, we're not using because we're not in session fully. And I think the Chromebooks piece has been exceptional. Thank you so much. I was very happy to see those numbers, about 14,000, being online during their lessons. And I've received a few phone calls as well. So thank you for that. That's it, Madam Chair.
I will just say, Ms. Burke, I think a lot of the money that's been repurposed has been money that was, that we didn't need this spring. And is that correct, Mr. Cameras?
Yes, that's correct. We are preparing a full review of our FY '20 balances for the May 4th meeting to help clarify all that for the board. Absolutely.
Okay. And now Mr. Young, then Dr. Sapini, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Page. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recognize that, that we're nearing the conclusion of this meeting. But, but I would, before we adjourn, just put some numbers out there. And specifically, so if we were to do what I've proposed to go, to go from the 1% to the 3%, we all know that that requires about $4.7 million. Disseminated proposal to each of you how we can get there. But, but I also wanted to renew my, my recommendation that we revisit some dollars that, that were in the budget prior to what has been proposed in addition, specifically the Dreams for RPS money. And, and just, just briefly, since Madam Chair, we, we did have that conversation about where to, where to find some dollars. And granted, none of these will per se be an easy pill for folks to swallow. But it, in, in total, more than $3 million could be identified. Budget code 511, Chief Schools Office with a reduction of one FTE. Budget code 514, Chief Schools Office, Other Professional Reduction of five FTEs. Budget code 512, Chief Academic Officer Instruction Administration Reduction of two FTEs. Aspire Academy phased out, that's $933,000 right there. Budget code 543, that's School Board Professional Services. Budget code 516, Clerical Reduction and Chief Talent Office of six FTEs to accommodate prayerfully a much more efficient office, leaning on the, the new software and, and some of the technology that we've already discussed. Budget code 514, Chief Operating Officer Reduction of three FTEs. My point is that what I've tabulated amounts to $3 million that we could, that we could allocate to that, that raise for, for our teachers. So, so I propose that, I propose that we do that. Look forward to future meetings. Thank you.
I believe I skipped Ms. Dor and Ms. Cosby because it looked, I just went, so Ms. Dor and Ms. Cosby, and then Dr. Sapini, Ms. Gibson, and Ms. Page.
Go ahead, Ms. Cosby. I'll go after you.
Ms. Cosby?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm here. What I was proposing actually has already been mentioned by Ms. Burke in terms, I wanted to reiterate the alternative programming for our elementary school kids. But second, I, I did want us to look at some things that we did not cover during the last session. Some programs, for example, like the Aspire program, how many students are actually utilizing? How many, how many students are in that program? Is it being fully utilized? So would like to get some information about that because I know it costs, what is that, around $800,000, $900,000? For that program. And that was it for me, really.
Okay. And then Ms. Dor?
Yeah, just in terms of additional comments, I think we all, I would encourage all of us, and I'm, I've been guilty of this too, of adding items to the budget and not identifying opportunities to subtract items from the budget. And as much as all of us hate to do that, we are in a reality where we know what our allocation is. And so I think I just, I mean, I encourage myself and I would encourage everyone when we make an add to also be mindful of what additional subtractions we can use to balance out that, that, those adds. So I would like to see us explore a 1% teacher increase. And the subtractions I would like us to explore are the HR system, potentially using one-time funds for that. I do support my colleagues' request to look into grant funding for the STEM academies. I feel really torn on the STEM academies. I, I think that, you know, I agree with what Ms. Burke said. It's a great program. It should be available for all kids, not just kids at Benford. But I do also think there's been some good points made tonight about, about sort of the, the funding there. So anything that we can do to explore that. And I, I, Ms. Cosby and, and Mr. Young, I think do bring up a good point in real, as it relates to aspire. I know that's been kind of an ongoing conversation that we've had for many years as a board. It is a big line item. I'm not, I don't have a lot of clarity on what value we get from it. So I would be supportive of revisiting that conversation.
Thank you. Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Gibson, Ms. Page, and Ms. Cosby.
Yes, thank you. I really wanted to remind, let's not forget our great assistant principals because they were promised decompression and haven't had a raise or a step in years.
Okay. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of points. I wanted to request that, so this week, we received a, a request from the administration to approve another Chromebook purchase. And my request is, is that we include that as a line item in our upcoming meeting on Monday to, to get more specifics. I'm eager to hear, you know, where we're at with the rollout. I'm eager to hear, you know, where we're at with the rollout, and, and I think it's critical that, as we make a decision about the additional purchase, that we have an understanding of where we're at with the budget. And along that same line, I think, you know, there are a number of online software that we're using now in our, in our virtual program, and it would be really helpful to see usage of those basic programs, and to get input from staff in terms of the different tools, you know, whether it be, you know, the vocabulary, and iReady, and, you know, there's, there's many programs, and so I'd like to get an understanding of how much all of those cost, and to be able to, to investigate, you know, where, where we want to pivot potentially or invest more, based on all of the data that we are now capturing as part of the virtual school. And finally, I think that, again, I think, I just want to encourage the administration to, to, you know, and I recognize it's a big ask, but in order for us to have a really robust discussion, and I agree with Ms. Dora's point about needing to look both at things we want to add and things that we want to take out, and I think in order for us to do that, we need information to be able to, to make those decisions. And so, you know, Ms. Owen made mention, it's not just what we want to do, but what we can do. And so we, at this point, we haven't gotten really any, any detail to really be able to make that what can we do answer. And I think that as we look at cuts, that's really where the insight is going to come from. What can we get done, and what do we have to get done, given the circumstances that the district is now in? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Page, and then Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to, just restate, I think it's been very clear where my support lies, but also, my colleague Ms. George made a valid point about, you know, we add on, but also identifying areas of savings or possible reallocation of funds, but I too would like to see the vacant positions, because I think that would really tell the story of some reallocation of fundings to support the needs that we have. And we all know we have many needs, and those needs come with a cost. But we are dealing with unprecedented, unprecedented times with this pandemic, so, you know, we've really got to make the tough decisions. But also, I would like to look at, revisit the Aspire program, because that has been an ongoing subject related to the budget for a couple of years. So I think it's important that we really get some hard data regarding that program, and, and I also, once we get information about Carl Perkins, there may be, may be some funding, some savings, reallocation there, but I'm in full support of the STEM Academy, because I'm looking at the big picture. I want to see that expand. And again, it goes back to opportunities, exposure for our students, that is so critical, because we have to level the playing field and close, you know, achievement gap, digital divide, we have so many challenges, and we have to try to address them the best that we can. And again, just want to stress the importance of the behavioral intervention palette and the intervention program as well, and the equity offerings. I think that is so important. So again, yeah, we want to do everything, but the reality, can we? But we have to make the best decision that we can. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate as well, just in response to a comment about STEM and resources, and I agree with Ms. Page, that I think it is critical, especially as we start, as we are in this era where we know our achievement gap could possibly increase, but we know that we are going to have equity gaps, we know it. And whatever we can do to level the playing field and to decrease those gaps, I think the onus is on us to do.
Yeah.
And in my mind, some things are just non-negotiables. That's where I stand, especially when we start looking at our equity funding, when we start looking at these STEM academies, and I think it would be great, we look at the STEM academies, how they are now, and see if we can definitely use some of the stimulus funds to expand in some shape or fashion. It might not be the same thing, but how can we do it? But we have people in our Black and Brown communities that are taking the brunt of COVID-19. We see it in some of the numbers, that they're way higher than our Caucasian counterparts in terms of confirmed cases, and most importantly, in terms of deaths. So wherever we can to decrease the equity gap, I think we, we owe it to our constituents and our students to do it. And as we talked last time about, I think it was maybe two meetings ago, we had a conversation about our career and technical offerings, and our career ed, I'm sorry, I'm not saying it right, but our career educational. And the comment was made, well, we're looking also at what students are interested in. We want to make sure that our students are interested in the sciences, in the engineering programs, in the math programs, some of these higher-paying programs, so that they can have sustainable wages. And, and I'm just, I will tell you all right now, I'm just in full support of whatever we can do to decrease that equity gap. Second, also, I think we need to look at, as we're looking at some of our partnerships and thinking creatively, how can we look at our partners, for example, and I've said this before, community of caring, as we're looking at our behavioral interventions, do something greater with that, maybe at a, it might be at a cheaper cost, I don't know, but if we can start exploring things like that. I had a conversation with someone from the literacy lab. I'm extremely happy to hear that we are using a lot of our tutors from the literacy lab to kind of fill in with some of our students whose parents might not be able to read on a regular basis. And so we have tutors who are helping to do that. Would like to see some of these things increased throughout, as we look at, of course, our equity issues and expanding our, our educational day and et cetera. Thank you. But I just wanted to make my position extremely clear about what we need to do, and for us to do all that we can to decrease this equity gap that we know will widen.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. I think that's a good note to end on. Thank you. And seeing no further comments in our chat, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Everybody, stay safe. Stay safe, take care. Good night.
Night.
Bye.